Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Charahoe Regional School District to order. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So, thank you for being here. It looks like Tyler is not going to be here this evening. Hi, everyone. Hello. Thank you all for being here from the public. Looks like Tyler's not going to be here tonight, and it also looks like Laura Chapman is running a few minutes late. But with that being said, the meeting must go on. And first item on our agenda is discussion and vote for the approval to expand the relationship with Troutman Pepper Locke to include any real estate. So, I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent and Mr. Zenyan. And Karen Grandy is here, also our bond counsel, if we need Karen, Ms. Grandy, to weigh in on anything related to this topic. So, I'm going to turn it over to our dynamic duo. So, I sent everybody out the letter from Troutman Pepper and Locke, so you understood what the terms would be and what we're looking to do. I briefly explained to the Necessity for School Construction Subcommittee that there's only so much we're able to do without a legal counsel. So, I'm going to let Mr. Zenyan sort of hop in and explain the need around this request.
So, when we started looking for land, it very quickly became apparent that without an attorney, there are pieces of land that we will never have access to. I've made multiple calls on two properties that the district is very interested in and realized that I'm calling attorneys who are not returning calls because I am not an attorney. So, you know, and that's just a matter of securing the land. But then, once we do have a piece, there's no way that myself or the school committee will be able to negotiate the closing of it without an attorney.
So, Greg, can I just interrupt for one second? So, just to put everything in its context, this is regarding land for a site for the one new elementary school.
This is for the Unified Elementary School. We're clearly looking for a piece of land, 27 to 33 acres. So, I went out and started looking to see who would be our attorney that would specialize in land deals. And Karen and John both recommended Charles Rogers. The good news is that he's already in the firm with Karen. Karen has been the bond attorney since the early 90s for Charahoe. So, there is a long relationship there. My knowledge with Karen and the Charahoe Act is I think she knows it better than any person present in this room. So, and that's helpful. I will tell you that the fee's a little bit more expensive. It's definitely not the cheapest, but in the long run, it may be the cheapest. When I had a conversation with Charles around this, he made it very clear to me what he does in an hour. You know, most land attorneys will take two. So, if you have someone that's billing you by the hour, it may seem like you're getting less because they're cheaper per hour, but in the long run, this is all he does. When you Google him, the I-195 land transaction will come up. Very big deal in Rhode Island. He closed all that. So, we're not in a position to have someone that can learn on the job for this. We need a piece of land, and we need it soon. So, I am in negotiations with a couple landowners currently, and I am at a point where, without an attorney, I don't know how to proceed.
Okay. Ms. Grandy, did you want to say anything regarding Mr. Rogers and his expertise? And have you worked with him before? And maybe just give us a little bit of background on him and his expertise.
Chip, I call him Chip. He goes by Chip instead of Charles. He has been working in land use for probably close to 40 years. I have been a law partner with him. He's been, I joined the firm, he was already there, in 2006. And I have worked with him actually a lot on the I-195 matters because it's a quasi-public corporation, and I do government law, and he does land use. And so, you know, he's been part of the development of all of the parcels in I-195. One I-95, I already have problems saying that. Also, has done a lot of other land use around the state for many, many, many years. So, you know, recommend him highly. Again, he's not the, you know, least expensive real estate attorney you're going to find, but this is a big project, is an important project, and I know he can do a great job for you.
Okay. So, I think it's important to point out that you recommended Mr. Rogers, and then John Anderson also recommended Chip Rogers.
Correct.
Okay. Karen, excuse me one moment.
Shirley. I just have a question.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Would the fees be part of the soft cost?
Yes, they're built into the bond issue, yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Diane and Larry.
So, our, like, John Anderson's firm does not do real estate?
No.
They don't do any of that?
They're not, it's not their expertise, education law.
Education law is their expertise, but...
Land acquisition is not their expertise, no.
I think if John felt comfortable doing the work or having somebody in his firm do the work, he would have done it.
Correct.
Okay, and so, so we haven't really looked into any other firms that would be less expensive, correct?
No, you don't have to do an RFP for legal. Because that's why, that's one of the caveats in the law.
Okay.
The school committee, because of the expertise that comes with it, your leave can be at-well. So, for example, if you hire, you know, Mr. Rogers, and something happens and you don't like it, you can immediately remove any legal counsel that you hire. But it allows you to make sure that, for example, you know John Anderson, we called John, here's where, you know, we're getting, we have some questions. He's like, "We really need to make sure you get, you do your diligence, get the right information." I would contact, and he said Charles Rogers. And then Greg said, "I'm going to reach out to Karen, who she thinks," and she said the same person we emailed that John said. It was Charles Rogers. We were like, "Oh, that makes that easier," so two people said the same person.
Okay.
But in the end, like, that's where John, you know, even Jackson, we talked with him, who's our building committee lawyer, and he said, "While he does it, it's not his level of expertise." But they all can do everything. It's kind of like a private care doctor. But for specializing it, Mr. Rogers has much more experience.
So, because of the recommendations, you didn't feel that it was necessary just to even look at any other firms, right?
Correct, because a lot of districts, this is where, you know, most of them have their own land, and they don't have experience.
Okay, okay, and I guess, you know, I'm reading over the memorandum. And I think the one concern I have within the memorandum is that, you know, it does have a fixed fee. It's not supposed to exceed $35,000, and then in the ending of it, the small, small print, I call it, if the negotiation sites are more than one, or if there's special terms or ground leases, you know, the fees would be adjusted according after consultation. I'm concerned about that, okay, where those fees could go. We're looking at $35,000, but obviously, things can change. So, what happens if that occurs? What happens if that $35,000 turns into $100,000? I mean, we have to really...
Well, it would come back to you, so the fees would be adjusted according to the consultation. So, if what he's saying is if somebody wants to donate land has different laws and different requirements than someone who you're purchasing land from.
Right, right, and I understand that, but if there are other issues...
If I may, so what he's saying essentially is $35,000 for a pretty standard, traditional transaction. It will be dealing upfront with multiple potential sites. You know, if you get very far down the garden path, you're three-quarters of the way done, and then a deal falls through for some reason, you know, that's the kind of situation where it's unforeseeable, and it could end up being more expensive. But as long as it's a fairly standard, not strange, hooky, weird covenants sort of transaction, that's...
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, this is Rhode Island.
Right, and so, that's the disclosure there, so, you know, I understand.
You know, and like I said, I just, I have my concerns with the expenses that it could end up going quite a bit more than what we had anticipated. And I guess the only other thing I'm concerned about is where we stand if the bond fails. Just going to put it out there. You know, what happens? What happens to all the money we've invested into the attorney fees and everything they've done if the bond fails?
It's just like your last stage one and twos. You lose that money.
You lose the money. So, we could be potentially losing anywhere from $35,000 to however more expensive it could be.
We've already lost about $2 million in stage one and stage two applications that nothing came to fruition.
And I understand that, I understand that, and that's why I'm looking forward at everything. Like, I want to be able to, you know, see something, you know, and anticipate that it could cost us a lot more. So, I just want to have that understanding out there.
Larry? So, Larry, we've got Linda and Laura.
Well, it looks like we're putting the cart before the horse here. We don't even know if the bond's going to pass. We don't even know the parcels of land that you're looking at are even suitable for building. And how come we didn't know about this when we voted on to go with this one school? I mean, it seems like we're jumping, jumping...
So, when you voted to go to one school, I'm pretty sure you knew you needed 27 to 33 acres.
Correct, correct.
I'm very sure that we, it was made very clear that none of that would come from the campus land.
Right, and how come we didn't know about these parcels of land you were looking at at that time?
So, you, I've repeatedly said, and I will continue to say, if you want me to negotiate land publicly, good luck. If I start talking about the current pieces of land that I'm looking at, you're, you know, you already have landowners that think the school system is very wealthy.
Can you, can you tell us what lands you're looking at?
If I publicly tell you what lands we're looking at, we're negotiating in public, and I would tell you it would make it very difficult to seal a deal.
Yeah, Mr. Zenyan has requested, and I actually just spoke to the chair prior to this meeting, that we have an executive session to discuss negotiations. But to his point, you, this is, you need to understand where the land is. They're not even going to accept our stage two application without the land. So, we can't even go forward, we won't even have a bond to go forward with if we don't have land acquisition. So, it doesn't have to be finalized by the application, but it has to, we have to do reviews of land. So, Mr. Zenyan, once you made the vote, he's been out and about trying to find information. The concern has been, we have legal, they won't speak to us because we're not attorneys. And we don't even get to see all of the land available because they don't have to post it. It doesn't have to be, it can be private.
Oh, you can do a Google search.
No, not if it's private. That's, we've learned that too.
Well, you can do a Google search, but...
You're only going to see what's not, what's been made public.
They're not necessarily, a lot of them are in ownership of corporations, and when I call, they have no interest in speaking to me.
Yeah.
You have to be, we have to be able to show pride that we have land, and we have to do the landmark.
One at a time, one at a time. Gina, are you finished?
I just wanted to, because we have to be able to do the site assessment. You can't complete the site assessment in stage two without the land acquisition. Larry?
I just think we're two years ahead of our time here.
Um, okay. Linda? Linda, Laura, and then Craig.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I just want to, there's two things I want to comment, Mrs. Taff's, you know, concerns. I think one is, there is a, there is a committee, a subcommittee, that's going to be overseeing this. So, I think if it got, if the money's got out of control, or the cost's got out of control, like Gina said, it has to come back to us. So, there's some oversight there. Secondly, we are, again, Karen made the point, we are getting reimbursed for the soft costs. So, there would be some money coming back, I guess, 65, whatever the percent is now, would come back. So, I guess we, we don't need to be as concerned, I think, as maybe you are, but...
Well, I think my concern comes from if the bond doesn't pass, how much are we going to be losing?
Diane.
Been there, done that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, yeah, so Linda?
That's okay, thank you. We've been there, done that. I mean, we've, you know, we've lost some money, but we need to move forward. We have to move forward. This is, you know, we need to do what's best for our kids, and we need to build this school, so...
Craig, Laura? Or did I say Laura, Craig?
No, she was first.
Laura, and then Craig.
So, with regard to the, sorry, I'm losing my voice. The proposal that was sent, when he said that he has, that it's $35,000, and that's basically going to cover all the closing costs, and then there's incidentals, does that include if you have a potential seller who has multiple plots or multiple, has his land already subdivided? Would that be based on each subdivision? Like, that $35,000, you would have to close on each individual one, knowing that we have to purchase multiple, like, so many, so much land?
No, it would be one $35,000 fee irrespective of how the land is subdivided.
Okay, so even if there's, like, multiple owners within the same piece of land?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Craig?
Listen, folks, this is, this is the process we have to go through. It's not going to be given to us. Yeah, we got to, we got to take a chance. But to top it all off is, I'm hearing from two people who didn't even vote to go forward with anything. And you're finding constant negatives and innuendo. So, you know what? Please, come up with something concrete, legitimate, and then personally, I'll listen to it, but this is...
Respectfully, I think what I bring to the table is legitimate.
That's your opinion, I got my opinion.
Exactly, and we all are entitled to it.
Okay, guys, come on.
See, Chair, Chair, it's as simple as this.
I understand, Greg.
You allowed her to respond. I didn't say anything when she was speaking, but you allowed her to respond, and then you say, "Come on, guys." You lost control.
I did not lose control. I did not lose control, and I take offense to that. So, we have a very important decision in front of us. Are we going to bicker like fifth graders, or are we going to get down to it? So, if she has an opinion, if you have an opinion, if Linda has an opinion, we have to be respectful of everybody's opinion. Come on, guys, and ladies and gentlemen, come on.
I make a motion to approve my second agreement.
Okay, so before we vote, I don't know that this was actually published on the Secretary of State's website, Angela, is that right? This document that we have in front of us? No, it doesn't have to be. Okay. So, I just want to read this for the public, so the public knows and that there's a record of this. So, this is, was a memorandum sent to Mr. Zenyan from Charles Rogers, who is the attorney, the real estate attorney from Troutman Pepper Locke, dated November 10th, regarding Charahoe Regional School District Proposal for Representation in Connection with Acquisition of Real Estate. And the memo says, "The Charahoe Regional School District, known as the District, is interested in acquiring a parcel of real estate as a site for a new regional elementary school. Troutman Pepper Locke LLP proposes to provide legal services to the District in connection with that acquisition. Those services would include: negotiation, if applicable, of a term sheet; negotiation of a purchase agreement; advice with respect to title and survey matters, in parentheses, including subdivision if necessary, close parentheses; attention to closing of the acquisition; and all other related services. We would propose to provide these services as a fixed fee, not to exceed $35,000. If negotiations for multiple sites are involved, or if the seller has unusual requirements, in parentheses, for example, a charitable contribution or a long-term ground lease, close parentheses, our fees would be adjusted accordingly after consultation with you." And then Karen S.D. Grandy was CC'd on this memo. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Doesn't look like there's any other further discussion, so all... Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Is it the memo that was sent to us, is that an actual, like, contract?
I would say we already have an engagement letter with the school district. We would amend that engagement letter to include this work. But Mr. Zenyan just asked us for a one-page proposal to present, so we would amend our engagement letter.
You already retained this firm for your bond counsel, so legally, they can rewrite that to include this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the language in there about the, it covers additional services, would that be spelled out within the more formal contract?
Yeah, we would add that language, that specific language, to the amended engagement letter.
Okay, so there's no surprises for what would be included in the 35?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And before we vote, I just want to point out that I did ask the superintendent and Mr. Zenyan on Friday if we can get a proposal in writing about, you know, some sort of language. And I appreciate Mr. Rogers sending something forward so that our committee could have something to review and react to. So, I think that that's the right thing to do as we are trying to all do our due diligence. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay. Who's opposed? Larry? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Yes, you're abstaining?
Mm-hmm.
Diane's abstaining, okay. All right, thank you for, thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you so much. Okay, where's my agenda? Okay, next on the agenda, discussion and vote to revise the superintendent's evaluation process. So, this was an agenda item that was put forward by a number of people, and I just want to give some context around this discussion for the school committee members, if that's okay, and just to sort of frame this conversation. So, I did, I did write a few thoughts down, and for the purposes of the public too, I think we need to give a little bit of an update as to why we're at this point of the process. So, before we begin discussing this important agenda item, I want to provide some context to frame our conversation. During the June 17th school committee meeting, Tyler Champlin requested a future agenda item relative to a more formalized review process for the superintendent. On July 7th, so following that meeting, Tyler sent an email to the superintendent, to Angela Brazil, and myself with more specificity around this topic with suggestions. Now, this was from Tyler's email. With suggestions to, one, create a subcommittee with two members from each town to put structure around the superintendent's goals. Help with setting those goals and identifying metrics to measure those goals. So, this was the language that was in Tyler's email. Two, have the evaluation process involve staff feedback to be reviewed by the school committee. Three, have the evaluation process include a community feedback component. Four, have the superintendent give an update on her goals and progress toward those goals in March. Tyler felt this update should be its own special meeting. Five, the process should include a formal written evaluation with a scoring rubric that all members of the school committee would be responsible for completing. Tyler specified that the rubric should include not only academic progress, but also include, quote, "soft skills." At our July 15th school committee meeting, there was a robust discussion on this topic, where many members of the school committee weighed in. Laura Chapman and Tyler advocated for a subcommittee to be... Laura Chapman and Tyler advocated for a subcommittee to be formed to guide us in this process. Jess Purcell advocated for a full committee to be, in essence, the subcommittee. So her point was, the full committee should be, in essence, the subcommittee.
No, that was not my point.
Well, I rewatched it today.
It's our, it's our regular business, not that, not to be a subcommittee, to do our jobs.
Right.
Our regular jobs.
So let me finish my comments, and then you could weigh in, because we're gonna, we're gonna have, I'm sure, a long, long discussion on this. Mr. Luzon said, made the point that we have to, we have, excuse me, Mr. Luzon made the point that we evaluate the superintendent all year long. Both Jess and Laura suggested an agenda item that was put on the August agenda to discuss this further. If you recall, this item was tabled, because Laura was absent at the August school committee meeting. During the July fifteenth meeting, Superintendent Picard made...
So, I'm sorry.
I need to...
I also rewatched the meeting, and Tyler said, "I have want to..."
Point of order.
...formulate more thoughts about this.
Can I just finish my, can I finish? And then you could talk as much as you want.
You're feeding for other people, so I want to tell you how I felt about what he said. He didn't just say...
Point of order.
Okay, what is your point of order, Polly?
Point of order, just continue on with, one at a time, please, that's all.
That's not a point of order.
Well, I don't know, just...
So Jess, your point is, because I would like to finish.
I want to make a clarification about what you said, because I also rewatched the meeting. Tyler didn't just say, "Laura's not here, table it." He said, "Laura's not here, and I want to talk about, I want to have more thoughts processed around this. I've changed my thinking about this."
Of cour, of course, he said that. I mean, I'm not going to say word for word, he, one of the reasons why he tabled the discussion was because it was Laura's, part of Laura's agenda item. It was your agenda item, and it was Laura's agenda item on the August fifteenth agenda. If you look at the August fifteenth agenda, it says, "From Jess Purcell and Laura Chapman."
Right. No, I know, that's...
Right?
Yes.
And that's one of the reasons why it was tabled.
That's not what I was saying. You're deflecting from what I said.
I'm not deflecting at all.
What I said was, you said that he tabled it because Laura was absent, and that was it. And I explained that there was more reasoning that he said in that meeting, that was it.
Okay, so if I can finish, and you could certainly correct me if you want to correct me, because that's fine. Okay, so during the July fifteenth meeting, Superintendent Picard made a very important point, important point for all of us to consider. And Gina said, quote, "What does success look like for the superintendent? And what does success look like for the district?" unquote. Ms. Picard stressed that this is not always clear from our body. Whatever we decide tonight, that must be our ultimate north star. What does success look like for the superintendent and our district? I hope we can all agree that the end goal here is to improve and professionalize this process, make the process more inclusive, so that every school committee member takes part in providing the superintendent with feedback. That feedback should be guided by a rubric, in my opinion. This is one of the most important responsibilities of the school committee. Tonight, what I see are three options before us. Number one, deciding whether the entire school committee is part of developing this rubric to evaluate the superintendent, as Jess advocated. Two, deciding whether a subcommittee will develop a rubric to evaluate the superintendent, as Tyler and Laura advocated. Or three, keeping the status quo, and keeping it like it is. But let me be clear, regardless of what we eventually decide this evening, every member of the school committee must take an active role in evaluating the superintendent moving forward. The superintendent deserves that. And I want to stress, this discussion tonight is not a job performance discussion, and it's not about politics. In our July meeting, Mr. Luzon referenced that the current climate within this body is political. This is not meant to be a political discussion, it should not be a political discussion. This is about working collaboratively across the aisle to identify what does success look like for our superintendent and this district. Moreover, this discussion we are about to partake in isn't meant to be a criticism of the way the evaluation process unfolded earlier this year. This discussion is not meant to criticize the superintendent in any way, shape, or form. I will not allow that as the chair. Again, this discussion is to determine whether there's consensus around how to best move forward with one of our most important responsibilities, evaluating the superintendent. This isn't about Ms. Picard tonight. This is about the evaluation process and improving it. When the superintendent succeeds, the staff, students, and district succeeds. I'm sure we can all agree on that. Yes, I hope so. My fellow members, let's engage in a respectful discussion. After our discussion, we will need a motion and a vote on how to move forward. Is it going to be a full committee putting together a rubric? Is it going to be a subcommittee putting together a rubric? Or do we stay status quo? If the majority votes to establish a subcommittee, then I'll ask for, well, then we'll have to put something on the next agenda to talk about who would actually serve on such a subcommittee. Thank you for your attention, and with that being said, who would like to start?
Can I make a motion for the full school committee to develop a rubric for the superintendent evaluation process?
Well, I saw Karen's hand first.
We can start with a motion.
So your motion is?
To, for the full school committee to develop a rubric to evaluate the superintendent, based on prior materials given to us.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So do we have discussion around that? Linda?
I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think it's like Jess had said, this is our job. We hire and fire the superintendent, we need to evaluate her, and I think it would be beneficial if every voice was heard on the committee. Not just, I mean, I know that we're all going to get an opportunity to evaluate her, but I think we need to have the whole committee work on the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura?
I think that the, because the, it would have to, regardless of whether it's a subcommittee or a full committee, it would still have to go to the full committee, regardless of what happens. And, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of doing the full committee, just because I think that it can put burden on other people. But I do think that it's still, it still allows everybody to give their own input, and that should really be the primary goal.
Anyone else? Jess?
So I know, I know you said, you know, explained some of what folks said in the meeting, but I would like to reiterate what I had previously said in July, which is that, like I said, I don't, I don't agree with the formation of a subcommittee or the use of a special meeting to evaluate the superintendent. It's one of our most important duties as a public body. And I think we need to be able to fulfill our duties together during regular meetings that have been scheduled in advance. I, like I said in my motion, I do agree to a scoring rubric, as long as the evaluations are not filled out anonymously. It does appear that this is the one thing that's been discussed, that there could be consensus on from the emails I've reviewed, not the emails, the meetings I've reviewed. Ms. Picard was, did share some of the evaluation process framework documents with us that are already in use. I do think that the evaluation process has a lot of information available to us. One of the things I also heard in the meeting, folks say, was that there's too much information. I want to condense the information. So a rubric doesn't really solve that, but it does make each member accountable to providing their feedback. Like you said, I do think that members should be active, actively engaged in the process. I haven't seen that from everybody. I did, in the examples you gave to us, I like the Illinois example, because it requires evidence to support board expectations. So if you're giving someone a low score on something, you can provide the evidence as to why. Or if you're giving someone a high score on something, you're providing the evidence as to why. I disagree that the current process is not robust or sufficient. On multiple occasions, this committee was provided with performance-based data and measurable results that indicate strong leadership. I did provide a list of that at that July meeting, I won't go through that again. I think, you know, regardless of whether or not this is about a person, or it's not personal, I think that to blame dysfunction on the process diverts the focus on our responsibility as a body. We're all adults, we've all worked in different capacities in the professional world. To say you don't have what you need to evaluate something, I don't think is necessarily the full picture. If the process was actually inadequate, why did a majority of this body vote no to extend the superintendent contract? If you felt you had enough information to vote no on a contract extension, then you had enough information. If you didn't have enough information, you could have abstained from that. I'm just, to me, actions speak louder than words. Your votes speak louder than what you say your intentions are, what you say you want to do. That's really where I get my input, and what decides the level of trust I have with other people. You know, like, I did call Tyler out at that meeting. It's interesting that Mr. Champlin's not here, because as you said, it was his agenda item. He had a list of requests. I've had conversations with him about it personally, and I think there are, he did have some reasons to doing that. But there also was a lot of, like, insider information that seemed to go into the decision of evaluation. We heard about emails that not all of us received.
I don't know what that means. I mean, that's like, that's like hearsay, so I mean...
No, so somebody said that. That was members of this committee that they received emails.
I don't remember that, and I don't know what you're referring to.
Guys?
This is with the superintendent, when, the contract extension. Ms. Champlin says she received about a hundred emails with negative remarks about the superintendent that I didn't receive. So I'm saying, when the evaluation, having a dysfunctional evaluation process is not always the fault of the process. Sometimes it's because someone's getting information from subjective sources that not all of us got. So I'm just pointing out that discrepancy. If you don't remember it, Ms. Champlin just said that she remembers saying that.
Thanks for clarifying that, and I know Laura, I'm sure Laura will speak for herself, but if somebody sends it...
She'll let her.
But, okay, but I want to finish now. I want to respond to what you just said. So, I mean, like, the level of disrespect tonight is at another level.
You're interrupting me in the same way you just, just didn't like me interrupting you.
Are you finished, Jess?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then finish, and then I want to respond.
Sure. So like I said, some members expressly received communication from constituents with negative feedback, but myself and others did not receive that feedback. How can the evaluation process be considered fair if some members are using subjective data to make important decisions? That's why, like, I do support the rubric, but I don't support subcommittee. I want a full committee working on this. And I think that we do have to make important, what is it?
Our constituents. They're, they're people that voted for us that are emailing us. They're, they're not just random people.
I'm not saying they're random, but I'm saying it's subjective when only certain people get that information. And we're talking about having a...
Maybe they don't trust you.
Maybe they don't trust me, is what Polly Hopkins said.
Maybe. I mean, if they didn't email you, of course, you're in Richmond, and I got...
Chair, point of order. This is exactly what I said a short while ago. You allow, no, you allow her to interrupt.
There's a dialogue between, people interrupt people all the time. I'm doing my best.
That's not how this is supposed to operate.
Craig? I'm doing my best.
You hesitate finding fault when you were sitting out there, meeting after meeting after meeting.
Unbelievable.
And how inefficient and unstill the people.
Well, I did, I did ask Ms. Hopkins what she said.
Your tone is out of control right now, Craig.
She did not ask to be recognized by the chair, she spoke. I did, I did engage in her as well, so...
So Polly, can you refrain until Jess is finished? I appreciate it, thank you.
Like I said, actions speak louder than words, and I think that we have to work on ourselves being professionals and engaging in a professional process. I'm in favor of maintaining a clear process of data analysis, but it is hard to move forward without trust and transparency, and that's why, one of the reasons, I want the full committee to work on this together.
Okay, so Laura had her hand raised, and then...
No, I didn't.
Okay. I thought you wanted to respond.
No, I can't.
Okay. Polly? No? Okay, so, did anybody else have their hand raised? Karen, just give me one moment, okay? So about the emails, I didn't remember what you were referencing about the emails, but obviously, when you just brought it to light, I appreciate you reminding me about that. But if somebody emails certain members of the committee, we don't have any control over what constituents is emailing which school committee member. So to say that other people had, you know, subjective data, it was, it was a constituent's opinion about a particular topic that they wanted to, which is subjective, but as evaluators, we have to, we have to take everything into consideration. What the superintendent is bringing us, what the community is bringing us. So basically, I'm not going to discount a member of the community's opinion about something. I'm trying to listen to all voices. So I can't, you know, I can't help who emails me, and then who emails you. I'm sure you get emails that I'm not privy to, and you're a Richmond representative, and I'm a Richmond representative. I'm sure you get emails from people all the time that they're not sending me the same email. So, I mean, I, we can't police who's mailing what to individual members of the school committee. I think that that's, you know, that's, that's really, really tough to, you know, evaluate. So, hold on, Karen's hand was raised first.
I'm not discounting, you know, conversations, not even emails. I have conversations with people that live here, parents, families, neighbors, all that stuff. We all, that's expectedness, an expected part of your duty. But the evaluation process, what we're supposed to evaluate, one thing of that one area shouldn't be given excessive weight. And I felt like, at that meeting, the comment made was that there was excessive weight given to that item. And so that is part of why, like, I do agree it should be a robust process, everyone should be an active member. But I think if we're going to evaluate quantitative data, we should do that, we should make that a priority. And as far as goals for moving the district forward, my number one goal is to get an approved capital improvement plan. It has been for years, it will continue to be that, until we have an elementary school that fits the modern needs of our students today.
Thank you.
That's what I will support the superintendent in the most wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
So I'm just referring back to, I guess, Tyler's email. So staff and community feedback is clearly evident in Survey Works, which is on the RIDE website. And according to the chart that Ms. Picard gave us, we get a mid-year goal progress update in February and March. As somebody who designs and utilizes rubrics, I'm not sure how to evaluate soft skills. Don't. The most important part of a rubric is actually the written feedback that's provided. When it's provided to students, I know, it has to be detailed, and it has to be meaningful, and it has to be solid examples to work towards improvement.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Linda?
Yeah, I'd like to jump on that, because I was an evaluator, I had twenty-eight teachers that I had to evaluate on a yearly basis, and we used a rubric, and you have, exactly what Karen said, you have to base it on concrete, actual, you know, information and data, you can't, you know, it can't be subjective, and it can't be personalized. It has to be based on what you can see, hear, you know, not even feel, I shouldn't say that, but see and hear. But, yeah, I think that a rubric could be interesting. I'm just not sure with this committee whether it's going to be possible, because we, I, I'm not sure how much, in just my own experience in sitting on this committee and not having other members give the superintendent feedback, and then not, not choose to renew her contract. You have to understand, all of you, that this is not going to be, this is not easy work, if we do it right. So if we're going to do it right, it's, it's going to be, you know, very, it's going to be very thoughtful and a lot of, a lot of work, so... And I'm all for that, but just...
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Karen?
Another important piece of this would be the calibration.
Yes.
Where we would look at evidence together, and we would all score and come back together and discuss our findings, to make sure that we're understanding these pieces the same, so that we're evaluating the same. So if a score is, traditionally, when you do student work, if a score is really high, and the other person is really low, those scores get thrown out.
Thrown out, yeah.
Jess?
So I did already reference an email we received from the superintendent that was also posted in the meeting materials, that shares some of the frameworks and documents regarding the superintendent evaluation process and other resources. The Charahoe Superintendent Evaluation Framework has a timeline of different activities, our role, how, where we can focus our evaluation. But one of the items also included was, sorry, it's a Charahoe example. Charahoe Regional School District Leadership Assessment for District Administrators. So Ms. Picard, could you maybe just expand upon this? Is it in use currently? Has it been, can you just say a little more about what this is? And if you think this is something, you don't have to say that, but if it's something that maybe we could adopt to be used for your evaluation, or the superintendent evaluation, not just yours?
So this was actually used for Barry Ritchie. It was the original rubric, when they first did the rubric. And then, I think I mentioned earlier at a meeting, that they sunsetted their rubric, similar to what Ms. Reynolds said, remember Ms. Reynolds, that they're, due to the lack of calibration or the feedback provided, they went to the full report, where at the time, Donna Scavitch was taking the feedback and put it, so that this committee could focus on the feedback versus the writing of the feedback. Mrs. Scavitch took that over, as she was there for thirty years, but do we still use that evaluation for central office? do we still use that evaluation for central office? Dr. Camilla and I were always looking, we're actually looking right now to see, to even make some changes, to make it more meaningful because it changes, the work changes. And this has been around a long time in ChairHo. I want to, I think it came into play maybe 2010, maybe a little before that. And then it was sunsetted around, I think, 2014, 2015. And then their direct feedback was moved. So it's something that Dr. Camilla and I both use. Mr. Zenian's evaluation is done this way. Special Ed Director, Assistant Special Ed Director, IT Director, Mr. O'Brien in the back, it's the district administrator. So these are the evaluations done with all the central office administrations. And then when you see the, the one, I think it's, I may have added it later, was the administrators' rubrics. The school administrators have one that's required by the state RIDE. So central office is handled by the district. And then the school administrators are done by the RIDE rubric. And that's how myself and Dr. Camilla score our building administrators. And then they, in turn, you have the educator evaluation, which is what we use for all of our teachers.
So for me, this is about professionalizing the process, as I said earlier. I think that a subcommittee is a better way to go. So I'm not going to support the full committee being involved in developing a rubric. We have subcommittees for lots of other things. And there, if we can put a smaller committee together, I think in the interest of time and efficiency, a smaller subcommittee is a, is a better way to move forward. But everybody has to be involved in the process of evaluating the superintendent. That's the end goal. So for purposes of this discussion, I'm not going to support this motion. I'm going to, I'm going to be a no vote on this. And I do think that we have very talented people on this full committee that could be part of a subcommittee process, develop a rubric, where then all of us will be involved in evaluating the superintendent. So, does anybody else want to talk on this matter before we come to a vote? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, the motion is for
Ms. Purcell made the motion
Thank you.
For the full committee to create an evaluation rubric for the superintendent.
And that's for the full committee, right? Okay. So all in favor of the full committee being a part of the, developing a rubric for the evaluation process? So Linda, Jess, Karen, and Craig. Okay. Anyone opposed? Polly, myself, Laura, Larry. Okay, motion fails.
Chair, can I make a motion that we create a subcommittee to evaluate the superintendent?
I second that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion here? We just went through this process of discussing it. So is there anyone else, anything else that anyone wants to say?
In the spirit of the full sub, the full school committee participating in this process, I'd like to hear from the people that voted no to my motion as to why they did or to why they support a subcommittee. I think if we want everyone to participate, everyone should participate.
Does anybody want to say anything?
Reason I
So that is Diane and then Laura.
The reason I, I didn't approve a full committee is because I think that having the entire full committee decide what should be in that rubric is going to be extremely time consuming. Okay? It's going to be extremely difficult to have all 12 members try to come in with a consistency of what should and shouldn't be on this rubric. Okay? Yes, the subcommittee can put it together. If the full committee doesn't agree with what the subcommittee has come up with, we can always make changes at that time. Okay? If there's something on that, on the subcommittee's, you know, process that the full committee doesn't agree with, changes can be made. It's not about just making all the decisions in the subcommittee and then saying, okay, this is the way it's going to go. It never ha, we don't do it that way. So we bring it to the full committee. If you don't like the way the rubric is designed, you always have the option of making changes or requesting that something be done differently. You don't have to accept it. Like anything else, when any subcommittee brings it to us.
Okay. Laura?
I'm sorry, before you do that, I asked Polly to just, because I was in the middle of recording votes and I didn't actually get your entire motion. Can you just say it again for me so I can read it exactly?
The motion that I requested?
I have motion for subcommittee and that's as far as I
To, to create the evaluation or recreate the evaluation.
The evaluation or the rubric?
The rubric.
It's not to recreate the evaluation.
Was it for a rubric or?
Well, a subcommittee to create the evaluation process.
Which includes a rubric.
All, all of the things underneath.
No, we haven't decided. We already have a process.
Yeah.
Well, that's the motion. The motion is, the motion is the motion. It was seconded.
So just to reiterate, I had motion for subcommittee and then everybody started talking. The motion for subcommittee to create the evaluation process with the rubric, is that what you said?
Well, that was my understanding. I believe what I said was, I made a motion to create a subcommittee to create a subcommittee for re, now I can't think of the word.
Revise.
Yeah. Reevaluation.
To reevaluate or revise?
I can't, and now I can't remember what I said. I said it per, first time.
So the, so I don't know if you want to
I'm trying to get it all down quickly, but everyone
Withdraw your motion and then withdraw your second.
I'll withdraw my motion and then redo it. How's that?
Number three, I want to take agenda item number three and just
Nope, nope. Polly has the floor right now.
Thank you for correcting.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
I withdraw the second.
So, yes. So Polly, your motion is?
A motion to create a subcommittee for the express purpose of the evaluation process of the superintendent wherein we may pause.
For the express purpose to create and/or the evaluation.
Of the superintendent, as it was before. Just reinstating it. Do we want wording in there for a rub, to create a rubric when there's already a rubric that's established?
We don't have a rubric.
Okay.
No. So it should include a rubric. So
I'm thinking of the previous one.
Request that you adjust your motion to include a rubric.
Yes. And if I say it else
I have a, yes, I second the motion.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other discussion on this?
Is there, yes.
Linda, yes.
I, I don't think that, I know we don't want to have to go through this again, but I don't think we should, we should talk about the rubric at this time. I think the subcommittee should decide what the process is and what it's going to look like. It may not, it may, may or may not have a rubric in it. I don't know. I mean, you're sort of pigeonholing the subcommittee.
I agree. I think the, the subcommittee should decide how they're going to move forward and in what way. And then bring it to the school committee and say, hey, we're going to do it this way. Okay.
Okay, hold on. So are you withdrawing it again, Polly?
Let's go back to the original version.
And I don't think she, she didn't include it in her first statement, so I don't think we need to withdraw it.
All I had in the very first statement was to create a subcommittee and then we all started talking.
So in the effort to help our lovely clerk.
Thank you.
Let's, I'll withdraw and we'll restate it so it's nice and clear for the, the notes and the public. Diane?
I withdraw my second.
Please on first.
I want to go slow and take my second.
Okay.
Make a motion to create a subcommittee for the express purpose of creating, of evaluating the superintendent. How's that?
No, it's your motion.
It's the process. It's not to evaluate the superintendent. The process.
I'm going to start with the express purpose. Too many people talked over.
Yeah. For the express purpose of
For the express purpose.
Of the superintendent's evaluation process. How's that? I think that covers broad enough.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other further discussion on this? Okay. Did you want to, did you want to weigh in on this, Laura?
So no, I'm just responding because Jess had asked us, you know, we voted no to explain why we voted no to her having the full committee. And I just would really just echo what Diane said. Because it has to go to the full committee anyway. So anything that's, you know, that's not liked or that you want to have taken away can just be taken away. And then also, I think that if you just look at the email that was sent to us, that Gina sent to us, you know, you can see that there's, it's, it's pretty robust as far as what is it, what the whole process, the evaluation process entails. There's just a lot there. And I think that it could be more effective if a subcommittee is tasked with, you know, that particular, that particular job. That way you're not having so many people involved. And then again, because it still goes to the full committee, it can always be changed. So that's just my, my point.
Thank you, Laura. So Jess?
Ms. Tep and Ms. Chapman both said, if you don't like it, you can change it. That's not true. You have to have the votes of the committee to do it. You can't just decide, one person can't decide, I don't like this, take it out. It's a process. And for me, we have an educational liaison. It's our superintendent. She provides us with a framework and all of the data to evaluate it already. I'm just having a difficult time understanding what the deficit is in the process that exists and why we have to form a special subcommittee to change the process as it is when some of you haven't even engaged in the process already. Or you did and then you still voted no. Or you voted no, you said you didn't have enough information, you voted no. So I have, talk about trust. I have trust issues with sending this to a, a subcommittee and then saying, oh, well, it's fine, you can change it if you want. Because I don't know if that would be possible, that I would be able to do that or have my feedback be listened to if I'm not in that meeting at the time.
I mean, you could say that about any subcommittee though. I mean, you guys have a policy subcommittee. Agenda item or a specific policy will be reviewed by the policy subcommittee. There are six people on the policy subcommittee. You discuss sort of how you want something to either be changed or stay the same. And then you bring it back to the full committee. And then the full committee has a discussion about it. So I mean, you guys had a necessity for school construction subcommittee meeting today. I'm sure there were things that were discussed in that subcommittee that, you know, I'm not aware of yet because I wasn't at the meeting. But it eventually will come back to the entire full committee. So, you know, that's how I feel. It's going to come back to the full committee to, to weigh in, to discuss, to improve. That was the whole purpose of this agenda item. Linda, did you have your hand up? Linda and then Laura.
I guess that, I think there are some people who have their hands up. I'm not sure you're going to
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. But Laura's next.
So I just want to say that I think I understand your issues with the trust and why you feel that way. Because it seems like it's very contentious on the committee. However, I think that all committee members are, you're still, Gina, correct me if I'm wrong, committee members can still attend subcommittee meetings, correct?
No, not, not if it goes over six.
But like, even if, even if they don't speak.
Correct.
They can't attend, doesn't it?
Because what happens is the meeting, if more than six attend, or more than a quorum in your case, that means that it should really be at a regular meeting. So once you hit number six, the individual, so if you hit seven, the individual has to leave.
Okay.
Or you, we can't keep the meeting going.
Okay. And could we, and is it possible, so if we have the, you know, the subcommittee just in the, in the effort of transparency, rather than, I mean, obviously you still have minutes from the meeting, but couldn't we theoretically have it, you know, in the same way that we have a live stream for special meetings? Could we possibly do the same thing for those smaller meetings if we had to, so that other people could be updated if they needed?
We just have, I always check with Mr. O'Brien that makes sure he's available when
I'm not, I'm not saying with him specifically, but I'm saying like
Well, that's who does it because nobody, it's a certain setup. So we don't have many people that can do it other than the IT.
Well, because I know at some meetings, we've had people that are not part of the school that have like had either like taken video or whatever from the public.
No, oh, I can't guarantee that. But here, it's our IT staff. So typically, because obviously if it's a public meeting, we put it on, it's through our name. So I know, I realize that could be, anybody can take any time. But if we wanted to make that standing on a special meetings, we do it on larger topics. We did it like for the slam and the, and what we do, would have to update Mr. O'Brien's stipend, I think.
So just kind of to my point though is that, you know, I think that it, that regardless there, you know, whoever's taking the minutes from the meeting, that it can be very detailed. And I don't think there's really any reason that it cannot be as transparent as, you know, any committee member would want it to be. So.
So Diane, I know you have your hand raised.
Do you have something to say? I'm sorry, I keep hearing somebody from the crowd who's talking.
Being rude.
Hold on.
Okay, I just, I'm sorry, I keep hearing comments. I just want to come up and speak by all means.
So Gina, I just wanted to respond to the question about if there are seven at a, at a meeting or can't be seven. So I actually asked Ben Scangio this question today because the necessity for school construction committee met today. And I, and I asked Mr. Scangio about, because if there, there are five on that committee right now, right? So there was a necessity for school construction subcommittee maybe a month or so ago when Larry was here. And then I walked in and I said, ooh, there are seven. I, I can't, I can't be here, so I left. So I actually asked Ben Scangio today, you know, what happens in that situation if there's a subcommittee meeting and that there are seven members of the school committee? And what he said to me was, was if the meeting is noticed on the Secretary of State's office website, that there could be seven at the meeting, but those people that are not on the subcommittee cannot speak for, you know, from, cannot, can't participate in the discussion. They could listen, but they cannot participate in the discussion because that would then, you know, trigger the quorum. So that, that's, that's what he said to me today. Is that not your understanding?
It's not my recollection from Mr. Anderson's. It's probably something we should clarify. Because I, as someone who works with Mr. Scangio in all Providence and Mr. Anderson here, sometimes, as you all know, lawyers give different advice.
Right.
So I would, I would want them both to talk first.
Okay.
And then provide us probably in writing what, what the next step is.
Because I, I had that question too. So, because I anticipated that that might be something that would come up tonight potentially. So, but that, you know, that's what he, that's what he told me today. All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Diane, did you want to say something? Okay, so do we have members of the audience that want to come up? Go ahead. Your name and your, I know, I know who you are and I know where you live, but yeah.
So Samantha Wilcox, live in Richmond. I'm not 100% sure what the makeup of this committee is going to be. It's hard for me, I think, to make a subcommittee when I don't know how many people are going to be on it. If you guys sometimes have different, people from different towns. But also from what I'm understanding is the subcommittee is going to develop this evaluation process and then bring it to the full committee for discussion anyway. So to me, it just doesn't seem like the subcommittee is necessary. Especially if you have so many people that want to be at the table and have the discussion. I think we should be inclusive and have all those people at the discussion instead of creating barriers to keep them out. I think we need to build a bigger table. Quoting Jess there for something she said to me before. So I don't understand, like, I do see the benefit of going into smaller groups at times and subcommittees can be useful. But if these many people are interested and want to be heard, I don't think we should be intentionally excluding them. Especially because it's going to be coming before the full committee anyway. So you will eventually need to have the conversation with those people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Yes, sir. Your name and your town, please.
Sure. Gary Stoner from Richmond. This was really painful to listen to. There's already, when a superintendent is hired, there's a process in place that identifies her role, her duties, the things she's supposed to accomplish. There's an evaluation process that's in place. And basically what I've heard tonight and in previous meetings is that based on one person's suggestion, that process is going to be thrown out in favor of creating a new process that includes a rubric. There's nothing magical about a rubric that says that makes perfect evaluation. But I didn't, I've never heard anything about the process that's in place that says it's not reliable or it's not valid or it's not accurate. So, so I don't understand the purpose of creating a new process for evaluation. And if you're going to do that, how are you going to ensure that it is reliable? And how are you going to ensure that it's accurate? And how are you going to ensure And how are you going to ensure that it's free of confirmatory bias? We sat here for multiple, I've been here for multiple meetings where people have failed to renew the contract of the superintendent based on limited amounts of evidence, if any evidence, that was public. And now, you're going to engage in an evaluation, and some of those same people who voted against the renewal of the contract are going to be involved in creating a new process of evaluation. So, how will you, all of you, make sure that that process is free of confirmatory bias? I don't think you know how you'll do that, because it's going to be really hard. But I urge you not to let that process go forward until you have a plan that answers those questions. And you may want to hire a professional evaluator if you're going to evaluate a superintendent and speak about the work that she's doing and has been doing for years, and without disparaging her in the process.
Thank you for those suggestions. Perhaps a professional evaluator could be considered if the subcommittee decides to potentially move forward with something like that. And just to respond, Mr. Stoner, for, for me, this was obviously the first time I was involved on a school committee with this process of evaluating the superintendent, which is a really big job. And just for me, I thought the, the process seemed rushed. It was, it could have been because I was new on the committee and didn't sort of understand the whole sort of scope of the process. But, you know, we had, we had, you know, a meeting, which was about an hour and a half, and the superintendent, you know, gave us updates on her goals and meeting those goals. And we, the, the school committee did not have, to me, enough time to, you know, ask questions. And maybe that was part of sort of my naivete in running that meeting in an executive session, you know, sort of setting. But I, I thought that the process was ripe for improvement and just taking it to another level of sort of professionalism and input by the entire committee. And this is not a criticism of the superintendent, and Gina and I have talked about this at length. So, I do think that, I do think that the process needs some, some retooling and reworking because the superintendent does deserve that. And the superintendent does deserve for everybody to participate in the evaluation process. So, Laura, and then I'll go to Mary.
Yeah, just to also respond to what both of you said, I recall at the, one of the meetings, and one of the reasons I'm very supportive of doing this is because I very candidly remember Mrs. Picard saying that she, that the committee and the school, that they needed to be aligned. And when there's a misalignment, that it makes things difficult. So, she, from my perspective, I felt like that she really wanted to understand the feedback from all of the committee members. And I think that that's important. You know, I do believe that the superintendent deserves our feedback. And if there's some members on the committee who didn't feel comfortable speaking about those things in a public setting because they did not want to disparage, or they did not want to get in a situation where they felt like it was unprofessional of them to speak on certain things, I think that the superintendent still deserves that feedback. So, if it clearly is, there's not a process in place right now, from, from my perspective, at least, that allows for that open dialogue at the moment in a more formalized way. Thank you.
So, I'll go to Mary, and then I'll, I'll go to Larry. And I'm just going to grab my coat because I'm freezing. Excuse me. I'm listening, Mary.
So, going back to your comments, Louise, I wonder if the process felt rushed this year for some people because the superintendent was working since the beginning of the school year on her goals. But some people did not come onto the committee until January. That's nearly half the year gone by that she's been working diligently to achieve those goals. But because some people were not present to see all of that in action because of the way the elections occur and the people come onto the school committee, that doesn't mean that she wasn't working towards and achieving those. The other comment I have is I am very concerned about this rubric that you keep bringing up because I fear that it will become very subjective. And I can assure you that after 35 years of teaching, if my evaluation on a yearly basis depended on the number of negative emails my principal may have gotten from parents, I would not have made it 35 years. So, I think there are two words that anybody who's going to be thinking about how to evaluate Ms. Picard, and it's something that I lived my whole career by, observable and measurable. If you can't see her doing it in action, and you have no means of measuring it, then it has no business being part of her evaluation.
Thank you for that feedback. Appreciate that. Larry, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think we need to maybe table this for the night and maybe make another special meeting to come together and see how we really want to do this. It seems like everybody's all over the place. It's, you know, I think, I think we should table this and get Tyler here and Patton, and everybody could be here to put their input into this, see how it could be done.
There's already motion.
There's already, yeah.
You can draw your motion.
Okay. Thank you, Larry, for that feedback. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table, and we, Jess.
Sorry, can I just ask Ms. Picard another point of clarification? I think this year, when I rewatched the meetings, you reiterated that your performance review was never on the agenda item, but this year it was. And that's why the presentation you gave in executive session in March was different than what we've received previously. It was different than the feedback loop that I had previously engaged in. Instead of discussing your goals in other ways, you discussed your whole five years of work here and how you had moved toward, if that was more of a performance review. Can you explain more about why that agenda item included your performance review and wasn't just the superintendent, whatever it was before? I don't know the exact wording. But that was just a sticking point when I rewatched the meetings today.
At the time, the chair requested, I got a call, I think it was from both of you, John Anderson and the chair, that my job performance was being added to the agenda item along with the review of the evaluation of my goals, which is when I utilized the strategic planning, because I thought if it was a job performance, and just to clarify, there is a difference. So, the evaluation is you all approve my goals in October. Based on those goals, I provide you with the updated progress, you know, to date, which I had, I had met. That's the goal. And we, and we do, we do push ourselves. Sometimes I have to come up, you know, that, that's going to be hard to do, but we, we push. And then, when we, when the chair added the job performance, you know, job performance means that you, you're reviewing myself and as an employee, no different than you, a teacher being called in and, and going to review your performance to date. So, you have to give more than your goals, you have to do your entire performance. And with a few members being brand new, you know, understanding five years of work was not going to be easy. So, that's where we had to bring it, we did it earlier, we gave more time. I had the, the feedback sheets developed so that if those who didn't want to speak could write it for me, or meet with me individually, that, that was always an option. Because as you all know, value, value the feedback. But I think my perception was, it got cloudy for those that were newer to the system. I know that even, you know, Mr. Champlin and I have spoken, he hasn't always been able to attend my evaluations. So, I think he, he's been involved, I think he was involved in one, maybe, maybe two. But overall, you know, I know that the chairs asked me about the, the rubric, I think as long as it's, it's reliable and valid, again, to Ms. Lyle's point, as someone who's had to be involved in that, and, and that kind of data, just like you would want me to utilize evidence research that wasn't reliable or valid, it is no easy task to develop a rubric. Just like if your, your own children came home, you would question a subjective rubric and, or one that, and I, and I mentioned just to the chair, I'm not opposed to a rubric. I, but I do believe that regardless of the superintendent, whether it's me, whoever, whoever else it is, that they deserve to know whether it's highly effective or it needs an improvement, the why behind it. So, that to me, it's hard to make any improvements when no one tells you, or someone doesn't specifically say, this is where I have a problem. Hearsay becomes really difficult. I'm, you know, not necessarily the individual who gets to say a lot, but what my role here at the school committee meeting is your liaison, which means I often am the messenger from the Department of Ed or the General Assembly. Not that I want to be, but I'm delivering a message that most people don't love, especially during COVID with RITO, let's just say, that was a whole new set of skills that you had to have. But overall, when the law changed to take some of the school committee's power away based on the trajectory of education, I think that's where some of this push and pull came in. I don't necessarily, it's just this committee. I think all committees sometimes struggle with the superintendent evaluation because when you're not living in a world where I'm a legislated role, I mean, most jobs, your role isn't legislated. So, mine comes directly under the law. I mean, then there's, your school committee is legislated with your superintendent. In essence, I think anything that helps us move the district forward is important. And if there is something that I, I always think that, I mean, I, I could tell you what I want to improve, like, that's the whole point of the goals. And in myself, I'm always someone who's looking to evolve and grow. I think most of us as educators go into this business because we do. But in the end, you know, the chair asked for the job performance, and I think she's even said to me that in her own, like, her newness of it, maybe it wasn't, you know, the, the exact move that would have happened, but I think the timeline was short. So, if the goal, you know, was to do both and, or a lack of, you know, how the process worked, we could have done it differently. I mean, I would have loved to be able to explain the process. I think I have never had the same school committee, ever, in a whole year. So, I think even that, it provides some disruption. So, it's a, it's a big learning curve for most. I mean, I've been on a school committee since 2008, and I don't want to be the chair because it's not, it's not an easy role to have. As I'm sure those of you that have done it know, but in the end, I think the most important thing, and I, I appreciate Larry's tabling, whether it's a subcommittee or the full committee, I think it's most important, it's really like, what part of the process feels like it needs to be different and what, what, where are the struggles? I think that conversation probably will help all of you figure out, do you really need a complete revamp? Is it a rubric? Do we have one that people can start from? But this way, I think the more that I know what feels awkward or why those of you who haven't given me feedback haven't, I mean, that's probably the best foot forward for me personally to be able, to be able to get stronger for the district. But in the end, I think the most important thing is that you all define the success. What does success look like? What are you hoping to achieve? But overall, I think it's a good conversation, but I, I understand that sometimes we all come from different sides of it. But in the end, I think you're all looking for the same goal, which is to have a thoughtful process. I think right now, the concern is maybe all, everyone's voice not being as heard, and I can appreciate the policy subcommittee, you know, same thing. We all have, I do think that your committee has a lot of subcommittees. But this is a topic where, I mean, this is, I'm the employee that you get to hire, so this process is probably one of the most important things other than hiring of the superintendent.
Thank you, Gina. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. So, all in favor of creating a subcommittee to clerk revise the superintendent process? All in favor of creating a subcommittee? Please raise your hand. Okay, so there's four of us, all those opposed. There's four. And abstentions. Okay. So, motion fails. Okay, we're moving on. Discussion and vote to approve adding another member to the necessity for.
Chair?
Yes.
There was a third option.
Which was? Status quo?
Status quo.
Okay, does any, all right.
I make a motion to keep status quo.
Okay. Does anybody second the motion?
I second it. Do you mean to keep the current process?
Correct. Status quo.
Okay. Fair enough. We have a motion and a second.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you said hang on, so I wasn't sure why you were saying hang on.
Because she was writing, and so we went too fast last time.
Okay, thank you.
I got.
Okay. So, is there a discussion on this? All right. So, all in favor of keeping the superintendent evaluation process status quo?
Let me say it as is instead of status quo. Status quo is such a negative connotation.
Just reading what the chair said.
So, that's four votes. All those opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails.
Exhausted at all.
Okay. Well, thank you, Craig, for bringing, bringing that forward. All right, discussion and vote to approve adding another member to the necessity for school construction subcommittee. This was an agenda item brought forward by Diane Teft. So, I'm going to turn this over to Diane to maybe talk to the committee about potentially your being added as a member of the. You're, you're welcome.
So, I attended that committee meeting, subcommittee meeting today before this one. And I have to say, I got a lot of information out of it. Okay? More information than I have gotten prior. I have a great interest in actually being a member of that subcommittee. I feel as though, you know, you know, I, as you know, I voted against the one school. And I did it for multiple reasons, but one of them was, I didn't have enough information. I didn't feel confident, okay? This committee, this subcommittee makes a lot of big decisions, you know, and they bring it to us. So, I'm asking actually to be added to this subcommittee so that I may be able to better understand and figure out what exactly is going on and what I can contribute and feedback that I can give.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to add Diane's hat to the subcommittee for necessity for school construction.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second from Laura. Larry, you were late to the, to that. Linda, did you, discussion?
I'd like to be on that committee, too.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have a motion.
I mean, if we're going to, you know, why don't we just?
How many people could be on this committee?
I mean, I don't, I don't get why.
Okay, one at a time, hold on, hold on.
I have the floor.
Yes, you do.
Why do we need to add another person to this committee? I don't understand. It, it's like you have to request. I, I guess I would like to request that, maybe someone else would like to request that. I mean, it, it gets to the point where I don't understand, you know. I don't understand why you want to be on the committee if you didn't vote for the, the school in the first place.
Well, I didn't have enough information.
I don't believe that.
And I feel, I feel confident about my decision, okay? So, going forward, in order for me to make a, a, a very good and wise decision, I need to get this information firsthand. And the only way to do that, Linda, is to be actually on that committee.
Okay. Craig, and then Karen.
Gina, I'm with the assumption that this committee will be disbanded pretty soon. Usually, probably by February.
Until the building committee is seated, but the necessity for school construction, I'm not sure what Ms. Teft means by not getting the information. Because nothing happens in necessity for schools very different. Like, we typically, for example, they asked Mario Carino to attend to get more information, but all of the information that happens at that meeting comes here. So, they don't get any new information, they don't get any information prior to the school committee. If anything, typically, you all get it first. This is really, this is made up of a requirement by the state to ensure that we can keep sort of a ball rolling. The reason why it doesn't hold much weight here is because the Charahow Act instills a new building committee. So, really, in Charahow, the necessity for school construction committee is more about an advisory to ensure we can keep the application moving forward and why, because they require it. So, they require one school committee member because everything has to come to you. You have to make all the decisions, you have to get all the information.
Right.
So, everybody on this committee always has the information. That committee is, is, is less about learning about the process and more about getting feedback to.
to be able to advise the school committee and what they're hearing in the public. So for example, like today about the website, how to get information, like more about how to continue to like sort of grow our communication and our.
Exactly, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
So, so.
Just to make sure you feel like you're getting the information.
Yeah, 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 no, I do, I do, I do. And, and you know why?
Because I, I reported, I've been reporting out at every meeting.
Exactly, exactly. But I can't see what the problem is, is with me wanting to be on this committee or getting on this committee. There was, you know, there's been other members who have asked to be on existing committees after the committee has been established. So we've set a precedence. I don't see where there's an issue or there should be an issue.
The numbers are.
Thank you for answering my question.
Greg, you all set? Karen, did you have your hand raised?
I'd just like to point out that it's an open meeting, so people are always welcome. And secondly, there were three votes taken, two for minutes and one for an adjournment. So there were no motions made. It was just a discussion and a timeline and a discussion about that. Even members of the public, if they were here, could have spoken.
Thank you. Jess and Polly.
So I agree, I understand why you want to be on that subcommittee because I did in June. And my request wasn't supposed to be on the agenda. Her, the chair decided she didn't want to put it on the agenda. So I went through grief to get on that subcommittee, too, and four members of this committee voted against me being on that subcommittee. That being said, as I said at that time, if you want to be on it and we're not hitting a quorum, I have no problem. Even if you voted no on the school, that's okay. I welcome your opinion and your feedback, but there, there does seem to be a double standard that happened. Maybe it was just a changing of minds, changing of hearts based on, from my request in June that was almost completely dismissed. And like I said, folks voted against, but I have no problem adding you to the subcommittee.
Thank you for your feedback. Polly?
I just wanted to point out that some of these subcommittees sometimes are very hard to reach a quorum. So if we have more school committee members on them without reaching that quorum of us, it might help out with the meetings. And I would like everybody to reconsider how many people are on the building subcommittee as well. Maybe a couple people join there so the quorums can always be reached and our business can keep moving forward.
So that's the building committee. The building committee is appointed by the town councils. You all get three members, so we can't change that. Necessity for school construction, actually, only one school committee member has to be present for the quorum because you, you represent a group, not a number. Like, you have OMA, which is different than what the purpose of the necessity is. So as long as one member of the school committee is present, you know, we can move forward, just like the principals, like there's not necessarily, we look at categories when we're doing necessity. But because you're elected officials, you have a little bit of an extra piece.
So just to respond to Jess's point about her wanting to be on the necessity for school construction subcommittee, the only reason why I objected in the first place is because we had a very long reorganization meeting in January where anyone want, that could have gotten on a committee, could have articulated that they wanted to be on a committee. So what I anticipated is, is now happening, was I anticipated is if you open it up for one person, then you have to open it up for every person. And then it takes time to put this stuff on the agenda, to discuss it and rediscuss it and discuss it again. And I keep getting constant feedback about agenda management. So I'm glad you got on the subcommittee. I'm sure you've been a valuable member of the subcommittee, and I don't have any problem with Diane wanting to be on the subcommittee. She has her reasons for wanting to be on it. I don't, who, who is it for, for me to question why you want to be on it? Diane, if you want to be on the subcommittee to understand the process more, by all means, in my opinion, have at it. You're welcome. So we have a motion on the floor and we have a second to add Diane Teft to the necessity for school construction subcommittee. All in favor? Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I do.
Okay, any, anyone opposed? Linda and Craig. Any abstentions?
Chair. I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, hold on. Did you want to be on the subcommittee?
No.
Are you sure? Linda? Going once, going twice.
Why don't you tell your.
Okay. So motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Have a great night.